Start the meeting. Start with the claims.
And you found what's gonna be here is on baby, grandbaby watch.
Oh, really?
Another one. Well, and he had classes this week on, so they're doing both, so.
That's exciting, though.
You have the, the other, the claims also?
Oh, I didn't give, oh, I'm sorry. I gave you your own thing. That's not why I did it, to give you.
Well, start reading and I'll follow.
Yeah, that's not what I, sorry. Gave you the wrong thing.
You be out in the sun too long, girl.
Do what?
See, you be out in the sun too long. I did, Brady, I see a guy got killed up there by a train near Crawford.
And one kid got hit, too.
And a kid got hit out there on one thirty-sixth way east.
On the tractor rail?
Yeah. Trick or treating.
Dude was from Portage.
They, they stopped the car in another room and they got out another car here. Yeah, that guy got hit, he from Portage, fifty-seven years, fifty-seven years ago, one in a rear traction, right there behind the telephone building. I said, that would've been, those guys called me.
CSX, please take that over.
I feel like buying Crawford was happy, that, that was close about two and a half hours.
Yeah, well, when we're running lights and signs, we can't get through there through market.
You'd go back there.
So, we'll go all the way back around, thanks. Those trains seem to always be stopped right there on market.
But why would a fifty-seven year old guy be walking on a regular traction from Portage?
Especially back there. Doesn't make any sense.
Can you see if I can find a lighter, light blue? It's hard to read on those.
Is that about our average per month on the water from Bloomingdale's?
It is right now. It's going down.
Well, I didn't write that figure down last month, I forgot to. I was just curious, 'cause we were talking about the gallon charge, pretty much leveled out, you know, every month. Claims for this month, month for the water department was eight thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, seventy-eight cents, and for the town was two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Under old business, working to get someone in here to do patching, as we've all complained about these holes, especially on Main Street. But I did drive to town, I met with the guy today, his name's Todd Lewis, I don't know if you know him, but he's done some work in the area. I've seen his name advertised, I don't know. He does, has done work for Bloomingdale's, and there was a number of other, so. I had him here today, he's quoted twenty-five hundred dollars to do the patching of these holes, patching over on Center Street, there's one spot. And then patching going up Park Avenue into the addition, there's, I don't know, eight or ten spots up there that need to be patched, so. That's cheaper than what we've paid in the past, the minimum before was, I think, forty-five hundred dollars is what we had from the other company out of Clinton. So, I've asked for your approval to go ahead and accept that and pay that twenty-five hundred dollars, and he hopes to get to those as early as tomorrow. That'd be great next week, nice week. Yeah, that's what we talked about, so.
We don't have the money to do that.
The patching?
Yeah.
We should have, but not a road in the street.
No, that money's gotta be switched over to motor vehicle to pay my loan, the what money I have, I don't have two thousand dollars to look for it in streets to spend for the year.
We can pay it out in general.
You can pay it out in general?
If we have to.
My general, my general's kinda running high now, that it, I mean, but, okay.
Unless we.
I mean, I'll, I'll just slap my hand, but yeah.
So, wait a minute, so what about that fund last month we talked about, that we're getting every month that nobody knew what it scored?
That was public safety.
Public safety.
You can't, that's.
It's public safety, isn't it? Well, we interpreted things public safety, that they didn't, they didn't agree with it.
That's like your sidewalks aren't supposed to be paid out, that's, that's public safety, and we redid the sidewalks out here, that was all cracked and broken, but, so I'll get my hand slapped for that.
Well, we can pay that out of water, because that was a road, that was a road cut for water, too. Most of those were road cuts for water.
Well, I better take it out in general before I take it out of water, if that's the case. Because I have the money in the water to do it, we could do that rate study, and I got that pump bill over there to pay, and that's four thousand dollars.
Yeah, we talked about that rate study coming out of that ARP money.
Did we decide that would come out of there?
We pretty much did decide that it would, it would work, yeah.
I remember Nick said that.
Yeah, Nick thought, at that time, he thought that was gonna, that would work.
But yeah, but still, there's, I mean, we don't have that money to take out of water.
Right, okay.
So, I'll just take it out of general and hope.
Did we ever get the claims for the repair of the side, of the sidewalks?
Yeah, we paid for that, but it's not been.
It hadn't been reimbursed, right?
And been reimbursed, 'cause we'd have that money to put back in.
And it probably won't ever get reimbursed, which we kinda knew that going into it.
Who are we claiming that against, though? The owner that go into that time? Previous, at the time, yes, not the owner now. Previous owner.
But, I mean, and that's the other thing, I got all this money in motor vehicle restricted, but that's restricted on what you can and can't do, very restricted. And I'll do some checking and see if that would classify as some paving, but I, my understanding of that was more to actual go in and redo a road, a new road. Like when you did the north and south end, but I'll do some more checking and see if that can be for a paving, because we got quite a bit of money there that, that.
And actually, most of it is to repair what was just paved, and when they had to cut the road, if that makes a difference.
So, okay.
So, are you okay with proceeding with that? So, in some way, we're gonna be able to pay it, right? Yes, well, we can definitely pay it. They're not making, waiting, begging for it.
No, I mean, we, we've got the money, it's just it's not all budgeted there, is the problem, and if you over your budget, they frown on you, but.
She's gotta get fancy with her pencil there.
She has a sharp red pencil, all that. Okay, I will let him know to go ahead and get started just as soon as possible on that. The pump house, the motor that we talked about, I think it was last meeting, that had gone down, and we were running off one pump out there. It has been repaired, all the parts came in, so he's got that taken care of. It's a secondary pump, not, not that we're talking about. It's pump two, I think it was, see, pump one and pump two alternates, so many hours on pump one, then it goes to pump two, so they all wear equally, so. About same time, so you gotta replace them at the same time. Well, actually, they don't, because there is a, I guess when they started up, they ran pump one for an extended period of time, so it would have more wear on it. And then they, then they go back and switch back and forth, so pump one had more hours on than pump two, so they didn't go down at the same time, that was the thought. So, long story, make sure both pumps are working now. Both pumps are working, everything's fine, he's, he's gone through everything there, both, actually, both motors, and it's fine, yeah. It's good to work with, and he, he's the one that's done all the, the work for the town since, going back from Larry Harmon was here as president. Who's he worked for now? He worked for Graves. Yeah, I know he worked for Graves, but he doesn't work there anymore. He doesn't, he works for. Houdini. Houdini Plumbing and, I don't know what all their electrical, Bloomfield, is it Bloomfield, or?
I haven't written the check yet, I don't remember.
That's where they're from down around Bloomfield, that's where Graves is from down there, too. Yeah, so, anyway, he's the same guy that's been taking care of the pump house for years, so he's very familiar with it. The sad thing about Graves, they didn't have anybody able to do that that had experience that was healthy. So, at the time, I went ahead and, and gave him the okay to go ahead and get it done.
Right.
And I would just assume we stay with him now, and. Sure.
That's what I thought we talked about last time.
Yeah.
As we were going to, and then we had a contract with Graves or something, and you guys were gonna check out to see.
We talked about that, and I talked to this gentleman, and he said, the contract that you think you have with him, you really don't have with him.
So, we don't have any money going out to them?
No, it's just a, an agreement that every, once a year, they'll come in and do a complete check of everything.
Okay.
So. So, is that still in effect? That, that's just a gentleman's agreement, so we can do that with this, with Jim, with Houdini, yeah. With, with Jim, not through Graves? Right. Okay, so, we don't lose anything by not going through Graves. So, we're gonna continue that, is that right? Yes, yeah, and we talked about doing it maybe every nine months. Jim worries about going twelve months, because when something starts to happen, and if you don't catch it early enough, but he said as good as, as the motors and the pumps are, he thought six months may be a little too soon to see it, so we, we just verbally talked about nine-month window on that.
Yeah, and that's what it was discussed at the last time, too, was a nine-month window.
So, we're up and running, and we're, we're good there. I did call Steve Brock after the last meeting and gave him the go-ahead for the rate study, and he said he'd get right on that and get it sometime in December, it was. And so, the billing on that shouldn't come until January, Academy.
I sent him everything he needed to.
Okay, good. I talked to Brady about some of the areas in town that need to be addressed. I have noticed that on one thirty-nine South Center, where we had the two, two buildings moved in, and the person was living in buildings behind a house, and the property was just not, it was a violation, so Brady took care of that, working with the owners, and this guy that was there was just a renter, maybe, I guess we could call it. Anyway, the buildings are gone, the lots are, are cleaned up as, as good as I would have expected, and my hope is they go ahead and pursue getting that house back in order.
That was their plans, was for him to move into that?
The O'Learys Brothers told me they was gonna do, they was gonna, they was gonna fix it themselves.
Yeah, that's, I went out and talked to them, give them a ordinance violation for it, and it's cleaned up.
We had a complaint on South Main, where there was some animals that shouldn't have been in town, and Brady took care of that, and that's been, been taken care of, so we're good there. I know we had a problem on, a continual problem on East two thirty-six, I notice there's been some work done there, but it's almost like you pick up this mess and put it over here rather than where it was. Figuring with the east side of the house, the west side of the house. Yes, yes, so, that's one we'll have to continue with.
That's the third violation of issues, so.
Are they even still there?
Yeah.
Can you live in a house without electricity and without water?
There's no law against that, unless the health department sees something.
Right, probably it's like there were small kids certain age, then.
Some towns have ordinance against it.
No, we don't, I don't think we have anything that would address that.
I didn't think we did, but I've been, had that question asked to be several, by several people in town, and I said, sorry, I know, I assume you can, but.
Not much we can do, but.
Not unless there's little kids in the house, that would be the only.
That's why I didn't think there was.
Especially when they're trying.
She's the only one living.
Or elderly, if they're, if they're elderly, I wonder.
Yeah.
As of last week.
Yeah, she's, I mean, I don't know how old she would be, but she's not very elderly. Yeah, so, anyway, we should, we should be good shape, and we just encourage Brady to keep on top of it, and see where we go with that. I do have, we had a little discussion on the sewer discussions, this was a paper that came through that meeting, that was actually prepared by Nick for the group. It's called a memorandum of understanding, basically, it all just lays out that, that we believe that this is a good path for us to take. And I did mention that before, so I went ahead and signed that, and I gave Kathy a signed copy of that. It, it only commits us verbally, or I guess in writing, but that we, we intend. We intend, our intentions are there. Our intentions are there. Now, he, he prepared this after you guys had your meeting, or before? He prepared that before our, our meeting. I don't know what the date was, how.
The fifth is when it's signed.
There it is, we're doing it.
What was it?
It's signed at the fifth.
Yeah, it's signed, we're.
So, that's the issue.
So, that was a meeting, we had a town council meeting on the fourth, so that was the fifth, so we should be, thank you.
Fine, I bring it to you.
Yeah, we'll have to move on.
Yeah.
So, that, that was prepared by Nick, and then the group went ahead and signed, everyone signed that. Yeah, like a, oops, I did. That's the only old business I have in front of me, do you have anything? Go on to new business, Nick, you wanna talk about?
That's just the resolution that she'd asked me about for the ARP funds, so that's the, I assume this is the second dispersment. And so, that's just your resolution, transferring it from the general fund into the water fund, thirty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. You might remember last year when we got the first one, that's what we had with it.
How much was it, Nick, thirty-six, what?
Thirty-six thousand. No, it wasn't that much last time.
I know, I don't think it was that much.
It's thirty-one last time.
No, it was thirty-four, 'cause we had a hundred and some dollars, that oddball number, they gave us all later on, for some reason.
It was close, but, yeah, but this one's thirty-six, so this would just transfer to how the general fund into the water fund, for reimbursing expenses.
So, it's thirty-six five, then roughly?
Thirty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, and I think that's the last dispersment, we shouldn't get any more.
Yeah, we don't get any more.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm late, I was shuffling ball practice.
Maybe you're still trick or treating.
Felt like it.
So, I'd have a motion to accept this resolution, moving those funds.
I'm gonna make a motion, we proceed.
You have a second? I'm sorry, go ahead. Have a motion, a second, to accept resolution twenty-two-two dash one, as explained by Mr. Soder. Any questions, any dialogue on that? All who are in favor, say aye. Bloomingdale's sign that.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Eight baby steps there now.
Get you guys to sign off there.
And that'll give us about forty-one thousand dollars in our account, probably forty-two that we'll have left.
In the, pay that P money?
Because we've paid out twenty, thirty thousand to Westler, and then forty-seven, seventy-eight, we had to put on for an ad that when we were supposed to have that meeting, and we didn't, so.
We paid thirty to Westler, or twenty?
We paid twenty, and then we paid another ten, we paid ten right back. Back in November of twenty-twenty-one to them, and then we, in April, we paid twenty.
So, what was that payment to Westler for then, last year, then?
You what?
I, see, I didn't set that back on until January, so what was that payment to Westler for then, last year, in November? Twenty was for the PER.
And ten was, was that when we did, paid them in November of twenty-twenty-one for ten thousand for something they did?
I thought that was for them to go ahead and start with the project, and then they, once they did, I thought that was a portion of it.
Don't have last year's stuff.
And, and my notion, go back that far, either.
Neither, right here. There was something I thought with the project, when it first started, that we had to pay.
All right.
And then, when they did, then once they.
I'm just kidding, I can't tell them all, I'm trying to, I said that. So, it's one, what we paid it for, or what the town paid it for, I should say.
It's all in with that sewer stuff. And if we don't go ahead and go on, then we gotta pay the other twenty, the balance.
Right, there's a balance of twenty that they were holding, yeah.
So, that's pretty much.
Just call me off, girl, and you said, oh, I don't know, that's far, I remember coming from that town board meeting, about two of you guys.
Thirty-five, seven, eighty-four is what we got before.
I still think you are, too. Other new business? Brady, what do you have for us tonight?
Took care of those, and then I got the prices on the, the body cam, it's about thirty-nine dollars, twenty-nine dollars. And Dwayne has one AR for five ninety-nine, ninety-five, it's a pretty generic one, it's a, a Radical, which isn't like really a name brand.
And this is for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That the town would own it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. We talked about seven hundred dollars before, and that range, didn't we?
Yeah, and then there's a, another one for seven sixty-nine, it's a root nerf at Dwayne's, and then there's some other deals at Dunnings and Academy, too, that are.
The one from Dwayne, you said sevens?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, is that what you would recommend, is that what you?
Either one would be fine, really. If I did the five hundred dollar one, then I could use a little bit of money to get an optic two for it.
Because that's one with scope or anything like that, you could, that way you could go ahead and get everything you kinda need, if you get that.
Because it only comes with one, one mag two, which I've got extra, so that's, I'm gonna work on that.
And you don't know anything about the company that manufactures that?
Uh, they're not bad, they're not like well-known, they're kinda newer, but they'd be all right.
So, your recommendation is to do the one for the?
The cheapest one and get a scope for it.
You guys, I mean, I've gotta go with what he's recommending, I, I don't have any idea. Well, I like Dwayne, you're talking about Dwayne, I don't like your, your gesture, I mean. Right, okay. So, you're gonna go with the lesser one, then, to be able to get a, an optic scope sometime?
Yep.
And I'm still saying that range, dollars.
Yeah, it'd be sixty bucks, seventy bucks.
And we'd already made a decision to have him pursue this, so I would say go ahead and.
Okay.
Go with Dwayne and get it taken care of.
Then the body cam, we can just order on that.
Say again, what, the body cam, how much?
Uh, what, twenty-nine, ninety-nine?
I thought you said thirty dollars, that's what I thought. I couldn't believe it when he said that. Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's more, way more expensive ones out there, but for, I mean, this is just one that, where you pull out the SD card and download it on a computer, so I can just download it on my computer in the office.
Okay.
So, I was gonna ask you how you do the backup on it, to be able to.
There, there might be, there might be need for somebody who knows IT a little better to move that, but.
Okay, all right.
I think Brad McNeil at the Sheriff's Office can help with that.
Well, if you wanna buy the cheapest one, no.
Well, we don't usually wanna buy the cheapest, you're correct, I just wanna, that's why I gotta, take his expertise and.
If you wanted to go Axon, it'd be about eleven hundred dollars.
With the thirty one, so.
But, I mean, as far as that goes, they all.
If you're confident it'll do what you want it to do, and the quality is.
Because I used the fifty dollar one at Park, and I've got a hundred, it's probably closer up to, the system's like twenty-five thousand in Montgomery that I'm using, and they look the same to me on camera, so. I don't think it's really about, it's just how easy it is to download, that one downloads automatically in Montgomery County, like I don't have to do anything, just automatically, goes up into the cloud, and these, we, the others, we had to actually download, so.
Okay.
So, you're basically, 'cause the laptop will end up and have to have an SD, or you have to have a cord to end up and be able to plug.
Just SD.
Well, I mean, if it doesn't have an SD, then the cord will end up, you can download by a cord with it.
And the only time we really have to download anything, if you have anything going on, then, so.
Yeah.
And then when it runs out of storage, so, I can buy a new SD card, which is like two bucks, so.
Sounds good, anything else we need for the car, or are we good, good shape, good to go?
Yeah.
How about maintenance on the car, is it?
Um, so, I was called to a place for the oil change, and they recommend waiting for, till eight thousand miles on police cars, so I'm about there.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna take it when it hits eight thousand.
Okay.
So, the tires are good and everything.
Something you might do is to check if there's any recalls on it.
That, I did, that one recall, there's no, nothing, you can't fix it.
They don't have a fix for it.
No, they got two in my truck, so. There's nothing you can do about that, so, I guess just wait for a fix for it.
Okay.
I'll probably get a letter when it comes in, more than likely, so, since we've got that letter on the recall to begin with, so.
Okay. Nick?
Brady dropped off the ordinance violations, so we're processing those, we'll go to court on that. I don't know, your preference wise, you don't necessarily have to attend those, but if you wanna attend those, I can let you know when they are. Most of the time, I can proceed with what I have from U.S. Department, so, but I'll, I'll keep him in the loop on the court dates on that, just in case there's one thing he thinks he needs to attend. Resolution was the other thing I had, and then I think you've talked about the sewer stuff probably already before I got here, so.
Just a little, last meeting, we did talk about the, kind of the premise of, of that, and then the MLU, I'll have them read that.
Yeah, DNR, I think, is gonna have representatives to attend the meeting, that was the newest thing I heard.
Yeah, that was, as a spectator.
Yeah, right, yeah.
In that respect, yes.
Yeah, so those are really the things I had.
This question came up about the sidewalk repair, will we get the money for that back to the town, is that the way that works?
Right, yeah, we'll have to get a judgment, but once we have a judgment, then we can enforce it, it's just like a creditor, basically.
Okay.
If somebody didn't pay the water bill, it'd operate the same way.
Okay.
We just have to have a court date and get a judgment, so.
Good, good deal.
Assuming they pay the judgment, yeah.
That's not our worry, that's the court's worry, or?
Right, well, it's kinda my worry, you know, anytime you have a judgment, it's, can't you collect on it, and so, do, are they working, do they have a house, do they have a car, you know? I mean, some people aren't working, don't own a house and don't own a car, and those type of judgments aren't really worth much, because you're not gonna see them.
Yeah, no, you're.
Right, but in this instance, I, I think there's a good chance we'll be able to recover, so.
Okay.
But that's gonna take time, like months, it won't be anything that'd be quick.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it'll be a while.
So, they've denied liability, so at this point, it's just a matter of a judge determining liability, so.
Of course they don't, own the house they live in.
You may have to testify, though, because you put your optic over there, so I'll keep you in the loop on the court date.
Okay, sounds good.
Probably all be set on the same day as the ordinance stays, so.
Anything else for us?
No.
Good. No other new business from the board members?
So, when is the next sewer meeting?
The fourteenth.
Fourteenth?
Yes.
Okay, is that gonna be Chris again, that'll be the DNR, 'cause he was on the last one?
I don't know which one's attending, I was asked to attend just to kinda narrate and direct everybody, 'cause Cindy couldn't be there, so I told her I'd do that.
There's not a whole lot of glue to it right now, it's just.
I know, I was just curious, the D N R, because I know last time who attended, I mean, cause we had somebody there last time.
Yeah.
That attended, but it didn't.
I, I think there's gonna be two attendants, but I didn't catch any meetings on who they were, but I thought there were two from D N R kinda. And then Bloomingdale and Marshall and Rockville and Towny and. I, I think the intended that meeting is to talk about engineering and what, you know, which firm to go with and how that, how all of that's gonna work, so.
Yeah, and, uh, I mean, this is for a P E R to be developed for the, the entire project. Knowing that we already have a P E R.
Right.
Right.
And that, that has to be discussed. How does that fit in?
Right.
And where do you fit in with ours, you know, we pay.
That'd be where you kinda bring that up and let them look when your guys are talking about possible.
Right.
Feather.
Yeah.
Engineers.
Yeah, okay. Percy, is that something?
Yes. Morning traffic, North Marshall Road, uh, especially during the school week. They're flying up and down through there. Uh, we have a.
You have about prox- approximate time of the day?
Yeah, morning.
I mean, just.
School morning.
Seven o'clock or?
Usually from about six-thirty until about eight-fifteen. Some of them that are taking, I'm gonna assume are taking their kids to school, they're just flying down through there. Uh, the other one is repetitive commercial vehicle, uh, that I spoke with Dale about on the yardage. And I figured it up on the internet using the state police's timing on it. And it come out to where he's running about fifty-six miles an hour and a thirty. It took him three point eight seven seconds to get from in front of the church to in front of Lloyd Miller's house.
Okay.
Which is the gentleman that lives just north of us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's pretty dang gone fast, uh, for an eighteen wheeler, loaded.
Is it a local vehicle?
I'm sure it is. I mean, most of the time, uh, up until fuel kinda got expensive, he was making s- five, six runs a day. I was hauling tank tracks. They're the big planks.
Okay.
They're used for avenues. I used to haul in there down there, so I know exactly what they are and where they're going.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah. Here lately, it's been a little less repetitive and then you don't know when he's coming. And that's dangerous. I mean, there's people that live on that street that are not going to be able to figure out that he's running almost sixty miles an hour and a thirty.
Yeah.
Um, and you can't stop those that fast. I know, I used to drive them.
Do those go north up by Wallace?
Yep, they go up.
They're the.
Just south of Wolf Creek, I think they're.
Yeah.
Usually they run, uh, Narrows Road up to Henley and Henley, up and around. You know, it's kinda amazing too, cause they're hauling for the Amish.
Right.
And the milkman, the guy with the big milk tanker, and I know because when I was with the Amish, they, uh, had told me that they had told the milk driver to slow down or they'd find somebody else. And I don't know why this guy seems to believe that he can just drive that fast up and down through.
So he's not hauling for Bears, he's hauling for the Amish?
Yeah, he's hauling for the Amish.
Okay.
He, he's hauling them, cause he comes back empty.
Okay.
So he's, he's going up north and I would assume that he's probably going up there just north of Henley Road.
Yeah.
Cause that's the one place I know of they deliver those, is up there.
Okay. Can you, uh, put that in your notes to, to take a look? I know there is a vehicle that goes north quite often hauling those and, and the big, I don't know, the mine props, I don't know, the twelve by twelve beams up that way.
Right.
That go to the same place. Even to maybe hit the Amish place up there, let them say something to the driver. It'd be appreciated.
I know we have concern about our streets here. Uh, done such a great job making North Main Street a drag strip for most of the people up and down through there. But you're not gonna have it very long if your Amish drivers keep running up and down through there overloaded. Um, there's several of them that are hauling logs on flatbed goose neck trailers and you'll see them go one way loaded and the tires are almost flat.
Hmm.
And we're talking tandem duels and they're flat, they're almost flat and they'll come back the other way and those things are standing just as straight as an arrow.
North Main picks up an awful lot of semi-traffic. Uh, you know, they come in and they, they go to Future X. Part of it, but the other Baird group goes north and, and those people go North Main and we don't have any restrictions on semi-traffic because the county doesn't have any restrictions on the road coming in.
Well, now the Amish haulers aren't driving semis. Some of those Amish haulers are driving just as fast as that commercial driver is in a pickup truck. With a flatbed with logs, this big round stacked as high as the cab. You're not gonna stop that neither.
Where are they going?
No clue where they're going.
I mean, the sawmill out, off of fifty.
There is a sawmill out north.
And Myers, the sawmill, and that Myers is up there? What is up there?
It's an Amish sawmill, but I'm not sure the name anymore.
Yeah.
There's Amish one and then I said that the other's that other one up there, but.
Okay.
And I'll see a lot of what he's saying and what I'm saying, when a door opens, you'll see them going.
Yeah.
Now, I see Bairds coming from that direction. I don't see them coming from the north. I see them coming from that direction most of the time and they go through town.
Right.
I thought maybe some of the traffic was, might have been due when they had that bridge closed and they were cutting through, so it's not, that doesn't matter that that's open now.
No, this is, this is north.
It's not the normal.
And if you're coming from Crawford's, on turn up here, a lot of times there's a semi sitting there ready to cross the road or the other way.
Yeah.
Well, when that bridge had the, uh, weight limit issues back several years ago, this became a favorite route for them to get by that, that bridge. And they've learned that this is a, a better short, short cat to go through and it hasn't changed. And then when they were working on the bridge, it became real heavy. I don't think it's gonna change unless we can slow them down. And you can, you can witness that by looking at Marshall Road going north. I mean, it's, it's horrible, the damage it's been done and.
Oh yeah, big time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm gonna ask you to take a look at that and maybe inform Park County.
As far as the weights go, we can't do anything about that.
Yeah.
There's nothing we can do. Um, that's D O T and we don't, we don't have the authority to do that, so.
You have the authority to stop them down, though, yeah?
Uh.
You have the authority to stop them down.
Yeah, but not for weight, is what I'm trying to say.
I know, I'm talking about weight.
Yeah.
And maybe, I've heard them when the windows are open, that they hear, even vehicles, oh, here and whoosh. And somebody, I think, leaves Future X at six o'clock. Then they must work the night shift and you'll hear them and, and a motorcycle you're hearing will fly in north.
Yeah.
And you can still hear them, those two ass curbs out there.
Yeah, big silver motorcycle.
I don't, I, I can just hear, I don't see him, I'm just hearing.
I see him. I have my cameras on for the longest time and nobody ever wanted to watch him, so I just shut them off.
I wonder too if that, what is it, the one sign that Rockville had or just?
Speed trailer?
The speed thing, yeah.
We can like ask the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, Mecca's got it down now, right now.
Yeah, it'll be at Mecca for a while.
It'll be there for a while.
We had that up on the north side.
Yeah, that was up there for a while.
About two weeks up there and everything was just, and as soon as it left, they went right back to what they were doing. And it's just like, they, they see him getting that car, uh, when he comes to town and drives around and you'll see a completely different demeanor out of everybody traveling on North Main.
See one of them, I'm out here for not doing that, sorry.
Rockville has a solar powered one that they have posted to post. I don't know what that costs them, but it, you'll see it along with thirty-six, I think, right now in Rockville.
See it there on Howard Avenue too, they don't pay attention to it.
No, I'm just saying as far as those go, they have them.
All right, the crossway.
It's probably a lot cheaper than the trailer one.
One's on Howard, they're very ineffective.
Well, our, our issue is we have a part-time person.
I'm worried.
And we, and we, you know, we can't get over that hump, except we can maybe invite Park County to also look at that and come with you, I think it might be.
Yeah, and I've seen that, similar to talking about, but when I'm, I'm there, it's, the fastest path is like thirty-four. That's, you know, so.
Well, like I said, as soon as they know you're here, their, their demeanor changes.
Yeah.
And he's got, he's gotten kind of unrepetitive here the last week or so, he's not doing it as often, which makes it even more dangerous.
Well, I, I would think maybe talking to the Amish is another good option for you. Just run up there and tell them what's going on, what we see in town and we have complaints and, yeah. Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, use those you want.
This is for September, so of course we don't have October since it disappeared yesterday.
We had some discussion earlier about, uh, how to fund road patching, you know, with a motor vehicle, if it's public safety, if it's, you know, and we had the public safety discussion before. And I don't believe we came up with.
I don't remember where I told you last time when we were talking about public safety. I thought.
We were gonna take the.
My records.
Fire protection out of there.
Yeah, is that what we were?
That's what we discussed.
Yes.
I gotta look it up for.
Cause I had that note for that.
Let me see if I can find if there's, I doubt we can use the public safety for that, but let me look.
And I know that I have used the sidewalks and I'm not supposed to. They have.
And your motor vehicle restricted?
And that's why I've gotta find out what all I can use my motor vehicle restricted on. See, that budget goes into your motor vehicle budget. That's what I don't understand that.
Right.
They want us to split it, but yet they put it all back together. And I don't think that's right. If they're gonna have to split it, then have it budgeted restricted then.
Well, you, you still have your rainy day. If we had to, we could do the rainy day. Not that we want to, but.
Yeah, we could use rainy day this year, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you've got it budgeted and, and.
And see, we was keeping that back for the.
Yeah.
Drainage problem.
Well, it looks like they moved a pipe in over here for the drainage.
Yeah, that come in a while back. It's been there for a little while.
Yeah, so I, I assume that they're gonna do something with that.
So it might be. But then again, I won't be able to next year.
Is our fiscal year, is it January, January, December, December?
December thirty-first to January.
Your motor vehicle funds are what you wanna use? You can use it for construction, reconstruction.
Oh, yeah, but.
Highways, all that. You don't.
Motor vehicle, but we're pretty much depleted that for the year.
So you're just looking for another fund to?
There's another fund called motor vehicle restricted.
Restricted that I have. And it's a new fund, but yet they put it together when our budget for motor vehicle. And they come up with it like three or four years ago, but they were pretty strict.
Is that for purchasing our vehicle and maintaining our vehicle then?
No. If I remember right, I think it was had to do with, they were wanting you to start building money so you could build your roads. They were wanting to build new roads.
You need a real fund, so.
Just for you to.
Helping her. Thank you.
I know Brandy and I've had some discussion on it.
Um, I, I see a lot of these other communities using their motor vehicle restricted fund for construction purposes also though, and just a brief look at it. That might be something, um.
Construction as in to repair?
Right, yeah. Some of the other communities have even codified it in the ordinances.
But there again though, that's still back into your motor vehicle fund on your budget of your twenty thousand dollars. Until we get that note up, paid off for the South Main, we're.
We have a couple of years left on that?
Um, I looked the other day, I think it was three or three years, four, three, how many years we do that? I looked the other day and it's longer than what I thought it was.
What, in five years?
When did you create the restricted fund?
Like three years ago, when they made us do it.
And did they give you any directions or paperwork or anything?
Not really. It's the state. Do you really think they're gonna do that?
It's just, it's very brief and it says do this because we said so.
Yeah. And Brandy didn't think it was legit and I said, oh, you gotta do that. And then she found out she had to split the years worth. Um, yeah, cause it was longer than what we had left, so did we do it for six years?
It could've.
I looked it up the other day when I was.
I would've thought we would've been at least three years.
Cause I had it written down at one time where we had left. I don't think I saw.
How long we had the trees? Two summers now?
Uh, threes.
It's been three years? Or has it just been two years?
Yeah, it's been three. Those trees.
It's been three.
Cause we had Jason water that one year and then he didn't water anymore.
Right. Well, we got a lot of rain the next year.
You have two boxes bags that one year though.
Right.
And put around.
Yeah.
That was the first year.
So here's the directive from the State Department of Vienna, creating that.
It did, man. One year they put it back down. I do remember that.
Okay, so it's been four years ago.
Right, and the purpose of this directive is to authorize and require county, cities, towns that receive distributions from the state motor vehicle highway count to create a new sub-fund within the motor vehicle highway fund to properly manage and account for the usage restrictions that were included in house and rollback, blah, 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 blah. The sub-fund will refer to through this directive as the M V H restricted and be used to account for motor vehicle highway monies which have been statutorily restricted for construction, reconstruction and preservation purposes.
But then how do we get to use it? They're gonna have to let me budget it more, is what they're gonna have to do. And see, they're not letting me budget more than twenty thousand dollars, so I'm gonna have to ask for more money. When I do my budget next year.
So it's probably just a flat, this is what we're gonna give you and that's it, though.
Because I, well, I show pulling five thousand of it out every year to make up our twenty.
Right, but is that a flat, that's a flat five thousand every year?
So it must be that they're allowing me at whatever their figures are, they must say that they, yeah, I'm good with five thousand pulling out of it.
But this is not what he's talking about. The five thousand you're talking about is not what he's talking about?
Yeah, no, it is.
Okay.
The political subdivision by ordinance or resolution may elect to allocate more than fifty percent of the distribution from M V H restricted during the same fiscal year. The political subdivision may transfer by ordinance or resolution that mount allocate in excess of the fifty percent requirement from the motor vehicle restricted. Um. Just give us this, uh, fifty percent required for, or that doesn't make sense.
But does that fund have in it right now, the restricted?
Twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
So see, we've built that much up in four years' time.
Yeah. He said preservation, so preservation would be.
I'll talk to my little gals more and see.
You can put more than fifty in, but you can't take more than fifty out, is what they're saying. So the most you can take out is fifty percent of whatever was given to you in a given year.
In a given year?
Yeah.
So that's where they're coming up with the five thousand, is okay.
Yeah. And you might see, I mean, how much are they giving you in a given year? Are they giving you twenty?
I can.
Cause if they're giving you twenty, you could take five thousand more.
That would be fifty percent.
See, right now I'm right at about five thousand dollars that I put in there, up through September.
For the fifty percent?
But how much is coming from the state?
I'm saying here, what comes coming in?
Yeah.
It's like, oh, well, every month is different.
But if we have a year of a total of twenty, by resolution, we could take another five hours.
I don't think I have that much money coming in, but.
That's.
Cause I split fifty-fifty to keep my motor vehicle fund.
So you might have already maxed what we can take, but that'd be the thing to see is how much are you getting from the state and we can take fifty percent in a given year. But you can't take any more than that.
Here's what. There's four. See, like, month of August, I only got two hundred, well, I only got five hundred dollars.
It's probably not.
But the month of September, I got close to a thousand dollars. So.
So that'd be the thing to look at, you know, what do we get this fiscal year and before the end of the year, you could transfer whatever's left.
Well, I must have, I, well, I put half of it in there, so I've gotten about eight thousand dollars total, is what I've gotten. Well, I must have, I, well, I put a half of it in there, so I've gotten about eight thousand dollars total, is what I've gotten. Cause I started with twenty thousand, I'm up to twenty-four, almost twenty-four six.
Right, but it's not, it's not the total of the fund, it's the.
But that, I split it fifty fifty.
All right.
So that tells me that that's how much that I put approximately four thousand, four thousand dollars in there.
Maxed out what we can do.
Yeah. So we're back to general fund to pay for that.
Or rainy day.
Or rainy day.
Yeah.
Looks like our pumping, uh, at monthly average is nineteen six, so, that's still good, it's still, yeah, wonderful. Anything else, Kathy?
Nope.
Yes.
I'll do next, I'll do that for us, but.
That was something for old business, do we ever find out about road signs for the truck, for the South Main?
I have road signs.
Did you have them?
Yes, that came in.
They did, okay.
They just need to be installed on something.
We have for a good while.
That's the.
I didn't know they came in yet.
I, I look to try to install them on some existing signposts and it. You almost would be this high off the ground, which doesn't make any sense. So I thought about seeing what U Mac would charge us to put those signs in the ground, but if you don't have highway funds, anything that you could put up with signage, I'm not sure.
I don't know how much you would ca- charge.
Yeah.
Signage would be public safety?
Probably.
Cause I think we took the signs out of there for public safety. We bought them.
But we do have the signs, they're here.
Okay.
It's just putting the posts in, you know, getting locates called in, getting those several signs put up.
Yeah, we got the signs back last spring, we paid for them.
Yeah, sometime in the spring, they came in, yeah.
Yeah, I took the signs out of public safety, so maybe we should pay for them out of public safety, good luck.
Right, so I thought U Mac was coming to town to do this project down here on drainage and I was gonna ask him what he would charge to do that.
Was there, isn't there a sign that, I hear that says no semis as soon as you turn the corner?
Well, the county's put a sign.
County put one up there, yeah.
Well, we don't have anything from right up here, so that way they don't put it down.
I had enough signs purchased so that if you were coming from the north, you had a sign to look at, no semis. If you were coming from the east, it's a sign with an arrow, no semis, and then one going here by Brian's business. And then coming into town from the other, from the south, going north, a sign there.
Which is, they're gonna have to be coming from the south where they can get turned around to get past the turn.
From the south, well, if they're coming from the south, the county road is already.
It's already marked.
At four fifty.
Yeah, it's already marked, if they see it, yeah, but.
Yeah. Anyone else have anything for the good of the meeting?